Okay, I am going to call the Wednesday, August 26th, 4:30 Board of Selectmen's Meeting and call it a order. Again, please remember, we are social distancing and we're wearing our face masks and we would like everybody to do the same as well. Without further ado, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for a national law chapter 30A, session 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Board of Health Agents Jared Macedo.
Do you agree?
Do you have a second? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
We will be back into open session at that time. Can you call the numbers, please?
George, that's Vladimir Rommel.
Yep.
That's Vladimir Matthews.
Yes.
And Vladimir Jager.
Yes. Okay, so Trevor, this is for background from executive session. So Trevor, just for your knowledge and to put this in perspective for you, because you aren't here when we did this. So we're gonna go over all of this, we're gonna agree on some, disagree on others, things that we might just X off completely. And then we'll have a meeting jointly with the FinCom and go over everything and then finalize it and go on and through it at that time.
Alright, sounds good.
Okay. Alright, so number one, to correct the town's salary, it was on the town meeting, but it was for the wrong amount. So this is just to make it for the right now. Is everybody okay with that?
First, you may.
Okay. No. Article two. This is just for the supplemental on this budget, which we'll go over at the end of this.
I thought we didn't do that at the next meeting, because I was under the impression that we were going to have to have people come in this time.
We are, at the next meeting, but they didn't come.
I didn't know if we were going to go over the dispute. I didn't prepare for that.
That's okay. We're gonna do this again. There might be some on here that we're totally not gonna do. So So we're gonna go through this, agree on some, disagree. But at the next meeting, we're gonna bring everybody in with the FinCom and go through everything again.
Because I know, I spoke to Mike today about the two conservation articles, and he said, oh, I said he would be there tonight. He said, oh. He was under the impression to be at the next meeting in September.
Right, so I talked to him today, and I asked him, are we going over this? And people said yes. But then we're gonna have a meeting with the FinCom, so we don't have to finalize anything tonight.
I just wanted to clarify that certain departments have expressed an interest in being able to at least.
That's fine, and maybe you can take some notes as to what questions we might have, so they can come in prepared instead of unprepared. Okay, great. Alright, because some of this stuff is there is no need for somebody to come in. So Article three is for the election markers postage. It's because of the change of how the elections are now, with mail-in routing and all that other stuff. So she said she could fine tune this, but I think this is something that you can't go without. Everybody okay with that for now?
Yeah.
For now, anyway. Article four, additional salaries for the assistant town clerk in the additional town meetings and elections. So you always have to have somebody in town hall, so I mean, we're only talking $645, so that's just to cover what she's missing in her gap of overtime and her working additional hours.
I'm going.
Everybody okay?
Yep.
You good, George?
Yep.
Okay. Additional salaries for the board of registrars and additional town meetings and elections, same $350, that's basically what all of that is for. Article six, the 25156, to do layouts for Elizabeth Drive and Captain Harris Drive for future acceptance. I myself have never seen this on a town meeting, as a town meeting articles. It's always been done by the developer who developed the property.
Correct, every single community head that has worked in some responsibility of whoever is developing the project to basically lay out the way in terms of developing plans and defining specifically how the road is gonna be constructed up to planning board standard, as well as making sure, in certain types of deeds, the road comes up to the middle of the road for both parties, they own the middle of the road. And there are certain deed mechanisms that let you be able to lay out the public way. So I've never heard of having to pay to have a road ready to build.
So just your clarification, so this is a development that's gonna be built?
No.
Okay.
They're already there.
Already there.
And they're not, they're not accepted roads yet? Well, I know Captain Harris Drive is here. I believe Elizabeth Drive is also on Captain Harris, yeah. So, but they're there, it's just that they're not accepted roads.
They're still private ways.
Right, and we, the board of selectmen, as people in charge of the streets and roads, have to accept that road. So the county's there is asking us that he, I'm thinking he's gonna hire somebody to prepare the layout. Again, the layout should be prepared by, in my view, and this is a board of three, should be prepared by whomever developed the property, not the town.
Well, it could be whoever develops the property or the owners, if they own up to the middle of the road, then you know, it's not the town's responsibility to develop. What was this?
Captain Harris Drive has been there, I don't know, I mean, for years.
Since.
At least twenty.
Twenty-five years here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's twenty. Yeah. It wasn't that far off.
Yeah?
So that's a question.
So it's either a question or, I mean.
Like you have to check them in and slay them, or whatever.
Are you guys, do we have a checkman in?
Yeah, I'd like to just hear some more details here.
Okay. Police station landscaping, sorry, I have no idea, I did not put this on here.
I did.
Okay.
And I don't put it on as a placeholder. My intent was not, I wasn't sure how we were gonna address the issue of, granted, we're not anywhere near the point of getting the real work of landscaping. At this point, it's gonna be pretty much, you know, it's gonna be finished, it's gonna be seeded. And the real work is probably gonna happen next spring. But the question then becomes, who is gonna take care of the grass and whatever, shrubbery and that kind of thing? It's gonna be a function of the highway department, is it gonna be like at the cemetery, do we hire?
No, it'll be, it's always been the highway department. The only one that takes care of their own places of the cemetery mission, because, and then they used to take care of the schools too. So whatever property, like handling buildings, we take care of. So I would, I mean, we're not gonna stop hiring everybody just from the police station.
No, I just didn't want that to fall through the track and then all of a sudden, next spring, somebody says, oh geez, we don't have any money to do any landscaping highways, I said, I'm gonna do it, it's not part of the job. I just want, my intent was just to sort of raise a flag to address this issue ahead of time, so that we're not coming back with this thing. And the grass is overgrown, there are weeds all over the mulch, and people saying, you know, use them. Who's supposed to be doing that?
State.
With a budget for maintenance of the police station. Shouldn't that be included in that?
Again, I think it's the highway department, they're the ones that do it.
They have the equipment, I'm assuming, to do it. I guess we, I don't know how we would clarify and make sure that they take responsibility for.
It would be a more natural function as part of the department if it works, where they would be taking care of parks and our areas, and they would be getting here, facilities. They'd be taking care of highways and other, you know, street lighting, things like that.
So.
Take it off.
Yeah, I would take it off. Alright, reducing the bond anticipation note, so we're gonna reduce that again, so that we can keep on, right? It's always good to reduce the gain.
Yep.
Increase the operating budget for water and sewer enterprise fund, that's their own entity, it's not coming out of town money, so that can stay on. You good with that, George?
I'm not sure.
Number nine?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, they're gonna take it out of their enterprise fund? Okay, and Article 10 is the same. Article 11 is the same. David, you wanna talk about Article 12?
Uh, yes.
I don't think we're gonna stop, you know this one.
Yes. We did spend some money out of the account. The past ring, we did transfer money, there's a, what do you call it, we receipts reserve account, where we keep, we accept the user fees and the cable fees. And we have accumulated quite an amount of money in that account. And we've been using that to offset certain costs associated with providing cable services such as, you know, Lake PM and Edible PM, as well as some purchasing of equipment. We did spend some money this summer on cable in the building, which we sort of expected, but we didn't expect it to be as costly as it was. The idea was that what we could do is transfer the money out of the reserve receipts into an account where we can actually spend funds. And if for some reason in the negotiations, we're not able to get money to put cameras into the new police station or some type of equipment that we might need, we're gonna be talking about a $10,000 server in order to allow us to transmit live from the community room in the police station. I'd like to have that money in there just in case, and it's not, we're not raising it, we're not appropriating it. It's not, it's taking, taking from the account currently exists and transferred it to an account and expense it that where we can actually charge items against it. So I'm asking for $25,000 to do that.
Do you understand?
Yep, so it just kinda makes it a little bit easier to actually use this money, though we probably need to do it in a quick, short timeline.
If we get, if we get it October 1st and the negotiations go on, if we're certain we at least have some money to play with, to get the room set up, so that we can actually broadcast from there. That seems fine.
So all that money that we get from the broadcast goes in separate funds?
It's like a escrow account, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, basically.
We're not just. Okay. Article 13, something I think everyone will need explanation on.
What articles is that on?
Uh, sorry, part-time conservation agent.
Yeah, ask Mike.
Article 14, that's another Mike kind of thing. All the members on the conservation. Mike also did number 15, the requirement for file and special legislation, I believe. It's just because whomever submits the petition, he wants to make sure that all the backup material for that petition, whether it be for special for special legislation, usually that's why petitions are made, have all the backup material prior to accepting. But he'll come in, I'm sure, and explain. The establishment of a committee to review the town bylaws and procedures relating to town meetings. Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay. Changing from an elected position to an appointed town clerk position. These two are the same, same as highway, I'll try to explain. So we have been looking at trying to have an appointed position for highway and an appointed position for town clerk. These are like sort of positions that have certain requirements. And people may grow into that position, and I'll take, for instance, Cheryl, she is the assistant town clerk right now. In the absence of a town clerk, she would be the town clerk. So when Jackie goes, she's automatically the town clerk, we don't need to appoint her or anything, she just steps into that role. But if anybody ever ran against her and won, and you know, anybody, it doesn't matter who, after she had been here for so long, I think, I don't know, I
I know, I think it's the best interest of the town to have this being appointed.
Yeah.
Right, it's a really important job that takes a
It takes learning, and it's not, you know, at that point, it's not really a popularity contest, it's more about what is the knowledge and expertise of that person involved. So anyway, if this, if those, these two articles pass, what has to happen, and it has to go to a ballot question at the next election. These two people, if they decide that that's what they wanna continue doing, also have to run for the position. But the board of selectmen can't appoint them at that time, and make the appointment a certain amount of years, or, you know, whatever the board at that time decides. You could make it under the bylaw, if you're making bylaw employees, you could make an appointed position that they write for some contract. Jackie's a bylaw employee, I'm not sure what the, there are only certain, certain positions you can make a contract for. So anyway, that's that, and that's, that's what would have to happen for those skilled police positions.
So what if they, if they don't win? Right, so say that it's on the ballot.
That if they don't win, and it passes to make these two positions appointed, the board of selectmen still can appoint whomever they decide they wanna appoint.
Okay, yes, if one passes, pause, that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay.
The whole idea of making elected positions appointed is to bring a certain level of professionalism to the position. Not that we're very fortunate in that we have, you know, a town clerk and highway surveyor that have been at the job for a number of years. And have a background in those types of skills, so they can carry forward. The danger, and it used to be more so on financial positions, we had elected town accountant, not elected town accountant, but treasurer collectors. And technically, a person could get elected to a position like a treasurer collector and have absolutely no bookkeeping, no accounting experience. And that has every potential to be disastrous. Similarly, you wanna make sure that the person who's your town clerk knows about election. Knows about, you know, how to process certain licenses. Same thing with highway, you don't want somebody just coming in that doesn't have some type of, understanding of engineering, doesn't have to have an engineering degree.
Yeah.
But at least knows how to, you know, what they're buying when they, you know, have a road repaved and milled, or a color or whatever.
That makes sense, thank you.
Okay, Article 19, how we have the planning boards in, I think that we've talked about this, trying to check on, you know, hone in on some of the solar arrays in town and make better buffers for people, and so that's what that one is about. Transfer to municipal regulation and transfer to state regulation fund, this will come at the end of the meeting where we find out what we have left. Okay, and now the on this. So we're just going So town moderator coming for an additional $20. Does he wanna borrow $20, Kevin? Selectmen increase 950 for postage and mailing of annuals this year. We don't have that money available.
We're concerned about the town meetings.
So see where it says comments? We're just gonna.
It's really, really tiny.
It's very dark, stable.
Okay, so we're on the 954, mailing for the You put that in, David?
What's that?
Mails for selectmen's project?
Uh, that's what brought to my attention.
Okay, so.
I'm gonna answer this one. Alright.
So I'm on, I'm already here, the second one down, see where it says comments, I'm on the second one down. This says increase of 950 for postage for mailing. So did postage go up, is that?
No, what most of these are, is my understanding, is, remember when we were doing the previous budget back in the fall, no, fall, it's spring?
Yeah.
We took out a lot of line items, I believe Kim put all of them back in, and that's what represents the supplemental budget.
So I guess we have to decide, are we living within our means, or are we just supplementing the budgets to supplement the budgets, which we have totally gotten away from? Because the fall town meeting, and I get, I get that there were some things that we really did have to take out. So I guess between us and the finance committee, we really have to decide, is this truly needed, or is this truly wanted? Because there is a difference between a need and a want, and I guess those are the things, questions that we're gonna have here, everybody.
Well, I think in terms of this, if we're gonna fulfill our obligation, as we had discussed previously, in terms of mailing out notice, advance notice to the residents regarding, because one of the selectmen, Remwell's request was that we provide notice by mailing, so, you know, we have been trying to do that, but we wanna, we wanna make sure that if we have more, one extra meeting is gonna.
Then you go for a reserve fund transfer. See, when you do the budget, and you know that you have an annual town meeting and a special town meeting.
But they did leave one somewhere in the year, if something happens.
Okay, next, the accessories, new director of assessing position.
Actually, the one thing about the, I'm gonna make a plug for myself, the 2% for the
Yes.
Cost of living.
Is that in here?
It is not.
Okay.
I like that.
Yeah. So Trevor, we asked all the town departments to really, and actually, we specifically asked David and some of the department heads not to move their 2% increase, because we weren't sure where we were gonna be with the money.
Yep.
We were fortunate, or in the, through the board's mind and through the town's mind, that both David and Carlton agreed not to have that as part of their salary. Whereas all other departments, people voted that in, so, I mean, I would hate for them, just the two of them, out of everybody else. That are non-contract basically, to not have that as well. Anyway, that'll be up for a town meeting discussion, so that's that. My head. Whatever the cost of living is for everybody else.
It's true, so.
Right.
George, can I try to talk to Mike?
More, you did that?
Probably, probably.
So my question was, what do we recommend?
The 2% according to
Sorry.
The two, can you hear me? 2% cost of living increase.
For this year?
Yes.
It would be retroactive after July.
Okay, the next thing is the new director of assessing position. I still don't have any background on that.
Actually, I did, I know Allie had a lot of week herself, and contacted Mike Motta, and asked to, because we had a little bit of a discussion, and we really need to find out how we're going to do the recap sheet, and how we're gonna get a tax rate set in order to get the bills out in November, and, or at least get the tax rate set in November. And I'm really becoming concerned about that, because obviously, you know, we rely upon the tax bills as a source of revenue, and we don't wanna have to borrow when we can, you know, have the money provided to us in the tax base. I sent an email to Mike Motta today, telling him that it's something that we really, really need to figure out what we're going to do. Because even if this position gets funded in October at the town meeting, which you're gonna
That's way too late.
I'm sorry?
That's, that's late, even if this position.
Well, that's the one I'm gonna try to make, is that it could be a month after that, that we have funding of somebody on board. And that's, that is going to be really late. So, you know, we need, we need to know what their plan is, and whether they're gonna have a consultant come in and handle that part until we get to the point of where we can actually, if it's approved by the town meeting, hire a director of assessing. If that's the taxpayers' well. But at this time, I think the immediate problem is we have to identify how that task is gonna get done in October.
I thought I saw some emails saying that we were gonna have to hire an consultant.
Yeah, we hired a woman last year, she did a great job. I don't know, and it could be speak to pre-matrol, I don't know whether that's her intent to hire her again. Or one that we will hire our, I don't know, student re-bow. I don't know what the plan is, so I can't explain to you what the plan is, but I know that I am starting to get nervous about that. And I know it's something that we really, truly need to address now versus later.
I just need to read. So I, I believe several meetings ago, these are the same, exact thing. I think we actually said it when we were doing our working meeting, that this is something we had to get done right away. And we didn't know which direction they were going into, whether they were going into hiring a firm or going forward with this position. And we didn't have any feedback from the union about this, and we didn't, so.
We made a lot of, several attempts.
Right, so, and I think we even talked about this last week with Jessica, like making sure that we have our recap certified, so then the bills can go out, we can work on this right away. This right now, to me, is like number one concern, because there were, there was a year where something happened in the assessors' office, and Karen Mello, rest her soul, worked on Christmas Eve to get the bills out. That can't happen.
I agree.
But the responsibility for all of its lives, not what's left in the life of the board of assessors.
It does, but when it doesn't happen, they don't go to the board of assessors.
Yeah, well, I know that, I'm just saying, that's why we have to meet the bridge, we have to say, hey, this is a real problem. How are we gonna solve it? Now's the time to solve it, not waiting until, you know, mid-October and say, oh no, what are we gonna do? Now is the time to address it.
So I'm gonna entertain a motion to have Trevor, as a personnel chair, along with David, work with the assessors and have something by our next meeting, to see what their plan is, to ensure as much as we don't like our tax bills, to ensure that the tax bills go out on time, and that we are, and actually, the board is able to set the tax rate accordingly. That needs to be done before our tax bills go out.
They did send an email up to Mike, requesting that meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we just don't hear that.
Okay, so.
Follow-up, I have a follow-up, I mean, right?
I'll entertain that motion.
Motion granted.
Do you have a second? Alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Bye. Thank you. If not, or, or if you do find something out. Actually, how about either way, can you have the board of assessors here on our next meeting? Hopefully, you will all have some information for us, but if not, then we can ask them
Yep.
Questions at that time.
I asked Mike, I sent him an email today, and I asked him to call me tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
I wanna know what they're doing.
I'm sure you're on top of it. Okay, the assessors' reevaluation, that was taken out? At town meeting? Yeah, so it says a expected increase for year one of the new three-year professional service contract? So year one is an increase of $11,500?
Yeah, it would have been an increase from the 43. I don't know what I, like I said, I honestly didn't prepare for this.
No, that's okay, so that certainly is a question for us, what, why is the increase and what is the, what is that increase for? And I'm sure, you know, we'll get all this, all this answered for us. One forty-five, the next page for town for postage, um, conservation commission, two new seasonal hot-hiding positions. I have no idea.
I'm about to get that one.
Okay.
So to be clear, does he say that we'd get to hire two part-time people for fifty-five hundred dollars? Condition? Then.
They must be, they're saying seasonal, um, I'm just wondering if seasonal meant summer? And now that we're at the end of summer, that that might go away?
Okay.
So that would be my question.
I'm also trying to put it into the beginning of next year, starting over.
Could be, yeah. Alright, next is reduction, um, in personnel, uh, for new hire, blah, blah, blah. And increase new police station utilities, including Comcast, expand SBS, repair maintenance of the building. Thirty-three. I have a question on that because, um, according to what we had from the engineers of the project, um, they, they actually told us what the rate would be. So I'm not sure what that, um, increase is or why, so I have to.
I can do it, I can get the numbers.
Alright.
I know we had a discussion about, like you said, what's getting.
Alright, um, no, that's okay, just take these notes and know, like I said, people will be prepared when they come in. And if anybody has anything to add, please.
Yep.
Please do. Alright, um, so the next thing we're looking at is new, um, secretary for, uh, the police chief.
Doctor Dexter.
Yeah, so I, I have my own view on this, um, we're probably not gonna get into the police station until October. And that's all dependent on whether the IT person can turn over the computers because we can't get out of this old building without the computers being working in the new building. So that might hold it up somewhat, um, I'll have a sidebar with Carlton about this, but first of all, that number is way too high and, um, I'm not sure if it's better that we wait until June to see what the police station's gonna really need before we go hire somebody, so, um, I, I think we just need more information about that.
Yeah, it looks like the original, original number was fifty-four. Right, is that, is that what that comment says, or it's rated to ten-one star?
Or we're still not sure when we get it on time.
It is still, but so it's, yeah.
Um, also, the police station budget is, um, a little high and I'm not sure they're gonna need that in, uh, retirement incentive because, um, within their budget was overtime for parade and fireworks. It was still included in their budget and we didn't have parade and fireworks this year. So that might be able to be offset by whatever is, um, additional money in their overtime account is. Um, communications, uh, early retirement, I'm not sure who's retiring.
For two, Mark, Mark, he and, um, I'm trying to, two for. Yes.
In communications?
Sorry.
Communications. Yeah, okay. Okay, um, alright, and then I'm not sure what the twenty-five to integrate fire with dispatch regional management system is, and so we need clarification on that. Fire, ninety-four fifty for repair and maintenance equipment training. Wireless phone, I think we're, so all of these things that we're going over, they were included in the last one and we took them out? Or is this new stuff?
No, they were all.
They were included in the original requests and then they were taken out before, when we were scrambling for, uh, thing where we need to scramble for money.
Okay. Alright, buildings for care costs for vehicles, um, I think that's fine. The additional iPad for the service for the user, um, fee for the dog license, twenty-four hundred, I think we talked about that a long time ago. Alright, eleven thousand for included for, um, road striping. So I think that that should go under capital, so it's not, so next year it's not included in this budget. So we can bring that up at the next meeting. Fifty-four hundred included for increase in recyc- recycling disposal fees. That's above and beyond the contract that we just negotiated and settled on. Why is that?
Uh, because the cost is going up.
But if we have a contract for a certain cost, why, why are we changing the law?
It's, I guess it's an anticipated cost.
Okay.
For the future.
Can you just find out?
Recycling's actually market price per contract.
Oh, that wasn't really talked about much, I guess.
That's what, the old contract was what.
Okay, cool. Alright, I'm not sure the board understood that, but, okay. Um, the next is eleven fifty for cost increase from vendor purports for office supplies for cemeteries. Anything you want for a hold on, just let me know. Um, fifteen oh four for, uh, cotton aging for office supplies. Usually they use grant money for this. Alright, next, twelve hundred for um, increase in twenty hours, but they're not, I'm confused because they're not increasing the hours, right? The library, uh, David, they're not increasing the hours, right?
Once again, I, I said I, I take the notes.
Alright, thank you. It just, with the.
Definitely, everyone, I, I sat down with.
Okay, so the library with the change, they hired the director and then they had the part-time person and that's what they were gonna leave it, so I'm just curious, is it a shortfall in the salary line item? Or are they hiring another person and they need additional money for the shortfall for that?
So, I'll, we have a discussion on that, that was back in.
Okay, perfect. Um, reducing, um, the unemployment because we have not had, unfortunately not activated any.
Yeah, that was a good one.
Yeah, that was.
We did have a lot of discussion on that, but you know, that one, it was basically how you're saying that. It would eventually roll back into the cap.
Right. And we could leave it at fifty and just, you know, just to make sure, um, but anyway, alright. Um, purchase of ninety-six thousand dollars for purchase of fire equipment. So we'll have to hear about that. And then thirty-five hundred for other. And that's for a loan, uh, the ticket key app for the, uh, transfer station, which we still have to talk about. Alright. So we have our questions, we went over everything and we'll know for the next meeting.
Alright, sounds good.
Perfect, it's five twenty-six and we haven't had an hour before. Alright, that's me. So maybe I'll fix my pocket spot. Yes, the other motions are going to recess for approximately thirty minutes.
Motion granted.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Bye. Good evening, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, thank you for wearing your face coverings and socially distancing, I really appreciate it. Um, I'd like to call the board of selectmen back, um, from recess and I'd like to open the public hearing. This public hearing is for Copart Incorporated, one seventy South Main Street, assessors map number two thirty-three, lot thirty. The license two is to, um, buy, sell, exchange and assemble secondhand motor vehicles or pots thereof in accordance with the provisions of chapter one forty, general laws. Um, it is my understanding, Copart, that you have three hundred and eighty-six acres?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, Tim, do you have a list of the butters and can you read them out loud, please?
Uh, that's a little better. Also, uh, so we have the butters, the, the Freetown State Forest, we have ISP Freetown, uh, see if I can. CFSX Transportation, which is the railroad tracks. Uh, Stop and Shop, Freetown LLC. We have, uh, I'll read last names of the other butters, Sears. Uh, Robinson Gearing Grounds, so that's kind of Freetown, Resendius. Breitman Family Living Trust. Rabillo and Hornium. Uh, kind of Freetown Montmoren. And Terri, uh, Terry Burial Ground, also kind of.
Thank you, are any of your butters present? Thank you. Um, Tim, have the applicant completed and returned all necessary requirements and paperwork?
Yes, we have.
So is my understanding, Jeff, that the only thing that is not submitted as of yet is the building permit, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, if at any time this meeting begins with fifty people are over, we will have to suspend the meeting and continue it to another time. Um, at this time, I'd like to, um, welcome everybody here and again, um, just introduce you to everyone at the front table and to the sides. Uh, my name is Lisa Pacheco, I'm the chair of the board of selectmen.
My name is Trevor Matthews, also board of selectmen.
George Glumaw, selectman.
David Demarche, town administrator.
And Tim is our administrative assistant. At this time, I'd like to, um, call Copart and have them do a presentation for the board and for everybody else here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just give us a moment. Is there a particular place you want us to set up?
No, that's up to you.
Good evening, uh, Matt, can you use the microphone?
Um, just, I wanna make sure that everybody can hear, can everybody hear? If not, I'm gonna ask the applicant and his counsel to use the microphone.
I'll, I'll use it.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board of selectmen, uh, my name is Attorney Thomas Killoran. I have offices at three fifty North Main Street, Forbes, Massachusetts, and I represent the applicant Copart. With me tonight is Brandon Carr from Detroit Engineering, who is the site design engineer. And also, uh, Lisa Doherty, who's the regional manager for the Northeast Region for Copart. And, uh, Tim Buzzell, who's the general manager for one of the facilities here in, um, Massachusetts. Uh, as I stated, Madam Chairman, this site is, uh, three hundred and eighty-six acres, it's located at one seventy South Main Street. Uh, it abuts the Stop and Shop distribution facility. Uh, approximately right around this time last year, uh, we began our, our initial permitting process with the town. That involved, uh, a, a site plan review application with the planning board. Um, because of where the property is located, being in the industrial zone, uh, no special permit was, uh, required. Uh, proposed building that's gonna be constructed at the site is under ten thousand square feet. If it was larger than that, it would've required a special permit. Uh, so we went through the site plan review process with the planning board, we had several hearings with them. Uh, there was a thorough review, uh, as part of that process by the town's peer review engineer, uh, EPG. They reviewed, viewed really every single aspect of the design of this project, including all the drainage design, interior roadways, parking, uh, building, uh, runoff, stormwater drainage, um, really every single aspect of it. Simultaneously with the, uh, site plan review process, we filed a notice of intent with the conservation commission. Um, and then again, we had, I had probably two, maybe three hearings before the conservation commission. Both public hearings concluded in and around early December of two thousand nineteen. Uh, the, uh, planning board dish- did issue a, uh, site plan approval at that time. And the conservation commission, conservation commission, excuse me, issued a order of conditions, um, in early December of two thousand nineteen. And again, as part of our conservation filing, EPG was the same peer review engineer, uh, both boards use EPG. They reviewed all the conservation filings, um, as well. A little bit of history with regard to this site, it was, previously, there was an attempt to permit it and develop it, probably going back over a decade or so ago, I think Brendan has a little bit more history on that tha- than I do. Um, so as part of that prior proposed development, there was an original, uh, MEPA, MEPA filing and approval that was received. Because the use changed, uh, we had to amend our MEPA filing, uh, which we did, and we've since received MEPA approval. But ultimately, the use that we're proposing is less intense, um, uh, than the original proposed use that was, again, I think, um, I think went to the MEPA process about a decade or so ago. Uh, as I stated, ultimately, uh, we did receive the necessary, necessary approvals from the planning board uh, and from the conservation commission. Uh, the plan that's up to my right, uh, your left, is reflective of the final site design that was approved by the planning board. Uh, as you can see, coming off of South Main Street, there was an existing access roadway. Uh, as part of the comments that we received back from, uh, EPG, there's gonna be a widening of that roadway at South Main Street. One of the main reasons is, is we're trying to direct all traffic flow towards the south. Um, so you can see, and there's a shaded area on that plan on the, uh, on the southerly side of the entryway. Um, that shows we're abiding to allow for the truck turns in and out of the property. Uh, as you head into the property, you can see, and it was kind of small. This little orange shaded building, thank you Brendan, uh, is the proposed, uh, building that will be constructed on the site. Again, it's gonna be, uh, less than ten thousand square feet. And then this area shaded in gray around it is called the shipping and receiving area, so when automobiles, uh, come in, uh, this is where they'll be dropped off. And let me back up, I guess I'm kind of operating under the assumption that everybody kind of understands what, what Copart's business model is and, and let me give a little highlights on that. So effectively, Co- Copart is an on- online, uh, dealer of, of, of automobiles, used automobiles. Some automobiles come in and they're in perfect intact working condition, some come in and they're the result of maybe an accident, maybe they were caught in a flood. They might be inoperable for one reason or another. These automobiles are bought to Copart, you can sign up through Copart, become a member and you can bid on an automobile. So all that is done off-site. Nobody comes onto the site and says, hey, I wanna look at a car and I wanna buy it here. Everything is done online, once the transaction is finalized, it's very often that the cars. Very often that the car is actually shipped out by Copart to the end user. On occasion, then maybe somebody that comes in and picks up the automobile that they purchased. Uh, but in terms of everyday foot track, if you wanted to come in, Selectman Pacheco, and, and buy an automobile, you can't show up, knock on the front door and say, hey, let me walk around your property, I wanna look at a car to buy, it just doesn't work that way. You have to sign up, become a member, and then you can look at automobiles online, bid on them, and if you're the eventual winner, then you receive that car and then arrangements can be made in terms of how you take possession of, of that automobile. Um, so a- as I, as I stated, and, and again, if there are more detailed questions in terms of the overall business operations, Lisa Doherty would be more than happy to answer those, she's got vast experience of working for, for Copart for a number, number of years. So, again, just backing up to where it was, so the shaded gray area around the building is the shipping and receiving area. Uh, this area to the left, uh, would be, I'm sorry, right here, would be the night drop-off area in case there's a vehicle that comes in after hours. Uh, per the site plan approval, the hours of operation were six AM to seven PM, although typically the hours are more confined than that, there may be occasions where they may come in a little bit earlier or leave a little bit later. But they're more traditionally work more what I'll call, you know, eight, eight-thirty to five o'clock type hours. But if there's nobody there, they do have a night drop-off area, uh, for somebody to bring in a disabled vehicle, uh, if they need to after hours. As part of the site plan approval, however, uh, vehicles cannot be brought in between the hours of twelve PM and six AM. And then, as you can see throughout the property, there's a number of gray shaded areas as well as a number of green areas. The green areas, as you can imagine, are either, uh, gonna be vegetated areas, wetlands, uh, the Potton River is, um, off to the northwesterly direction. Um, these are all undisturbed areas. The shaded gray areas are what would be utilized for parking the vehicles that come onto the site. The shaded gray areas are what would be utilized for parking the vehicles that come onto the site. In terms of how these vehicles actually get back here, when they're dropped off in the front area, the vehicle doesn't then get driven back to wherever it's ultimately going to end up on the site. They have a special, what I'll, I'll call a forklift-type truck that actually lifts the vehicles up. And this is regardless of whether the vehicle is operable or inoperable. Lifts the vehicles up and then brings them back to their final destination and places them there. The vehicles don't move. They stay there until they're sold. Once again, the forklift-type truck will go and pick up those vehicles again, bring them out to the front, and they're loaded on to the vehicle that's going to take it to its final destination. Or if it actually is going to be driven off-site, it's driven off-site from up in the front portion of the, of the property, of the development. One of the things that we made a point in doing in terms of this development is trying to make sure that we were sensitive to the wetland areas and the riverfront. None of the developed areas, impervious areas, I should say, are within a wetland at all. So there's been no disturbance of the wetlands, no filling of the wetlands with replication someplace else. Everything has been kept outside of it. There is some work that'll be done within the buffer zone, but all of that will be, you know, detention sw- detention basins, swales, things of that nature. There's going to be no impervious area within the buffer zone. Is that correct, Brendan? Copart, to give you a little bit more background, is a multinational corporation. They own and operate over two hundred facilities worldwide that are similar to this facility. This one will be its most modern one if and when it gets developed. And obviously, over the years, over the decades, you know, just like anybody else, they find ways to be more sensitive to the environment, try to do, you know, engage in better business practices. And this will be a state-of-the-art facility for Copart. They've got eight other locations in New England. They've got three in Massachusetts. As part of our Site Plan Review Process, the Planning Board, I believe maybe Mr. Chandler, some other members from the town, whether they be boards or personnel, ended up visiting one of the Copart sites, I think in North Carolina. In North Carolina, I'm getting a nod. It was in North Carolina, which is a more modern facility, which is going to be more in line with this facility here. So they got a firsthand look at the operations. You know, what happens when a car comes in? Where does it go? How are they stored? Just again, the day-to-day operations, not so bold, so what goes on at the site. My understanding, I didn't go on the visit, but my understanding was that they were all very impressed and pleased with what they saw in terms of the level of cleanliness, how vehicles are handled, just the overall level of professionalism of how the operation was run. I'm not sure if the Board is, would like a, you know, further explanation regarding the intricacies of the, of the wetlands and what we're doing in terms of drainage and things like that. If so, Brandon Carr can certainly speak in greater detail to that than, than I can. Again, I don't think necessarily that's why we're here before this Board, but I understand if there are questions in that regard, we'd be happy to answer them. Just, I do want the Board to know again, we've gone through Site Plan Review. We've gone through the Conservation Commission. We've had our plans thoroughly reviewed by the town's Peer Review Engineer. There was an amended MIPA approval. As part of that, there was input from Natural Heritage. We've had a lot of different agencies take a look at this site and our development, and they provided comments throughout our process. And one of the other things that I'd be, I don't want to neglect to mention, is that as part of the approval through the Conservation Commission, we were obligated to enter into an agreement with the town to keep a large tract of this land open through a conservation restriction. We've been going through a, a lot of, just really kind of meet out the wording of that restriction since I'd say January or February. We're, I think we're at the finish line. I think we've got the latest round of comments in for both the state and the town. Copart has indicated that they're agreeable to the, the last set of comments. So ultimately, that's going to get circulated for everybody for signature. On the town's side, ultimately, even though I don't think that has anything to do with why we're here tonight, the conservation restriction is to be signed by the Conservation Commission and this Board of Selectmen. Then it gets signed by, or simultaneously gets signed by Copart, and then ultimately, the last signatory on it is the state.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to go through, the Board has questions, I'm sure. Public comment, for sure. So at this time, I'm going to ask you to turn those boards a little bit so the public can see them, just so we all know what we're talking about. I am going to go through public comment first, then the Board will take over and ask questions after that. I really would like everybody to make sure they adhere to protocol and be kind and courteous of one another. I know that this is certainly on the minds of a lot of people in this room right now for one reason or another. But I just want to make, want to make sure that this stays on track. All right? So right now, I will open it up for public comment. If anybody has any questions, here's a concern. You can come to the microphone. Please state your name and your area of town. You do not have to state your address.
Thank you. My name is Erica Ferrera, and I live in a sonnet just off of Main Street. I don't even know where to begin. All of this is so unsettling, and I've heard so much of this before. This is the first meeting I've attended where I've had the opportunity to learn about Copart. I tried to attend a meeting in December of 2019, and that meeting was supposed to be canceled. I got an email, I believe, from the town. The town offices were closed due to inclement weather. I had planned to attend that meeting out of concern for what was going on on the site, and apparently I missed it. It sounds like it was relocated to the Town Hall, and several things happened at that meeting. Prior to that, there were two others. One on November twelfth, I believe. It sounds like there were other meetings prior to that, and just this afternoon, looking at Copart, who they are, what they do, what's involved, looking at the site, I saw similar plans online. I am just overwhelmed by the impact I think this is going to have on our town. I think it's going to have a very negative impact on Free Town. As many of the residents here and Board of Selectmen know, I have tried to be vocal in my opposition of the facility Excel Recycling Scrap Metal Recycler Processing Facility, just a stone's throw from my house. I am about half a mile downwind of Excel, and in reading these reports, everything's all jumbled now, but somebody said somewhere that, oh, the nearest neighbor to Copart is seven hundred and fifty feet away. Somebody else said the nearest neighbor is one thousand feet away. I'm about twenty-five hundred feet away, and I can hear it all. I can hear the trucks. I can hear the backup noise. I see the dust. I hear the explosions, all these problems, the trucks coming and going, coming and going. I understand the general public will not be going on-site to pick and choose whatever car they're interested in, but it's very concerning to hear someone say, on occasion, someone might need to come as early as seven o'clock. On occasion, someone might need to come past five-thirty. On the December third meeting, which the town or residents weren't privy to because of the Town Hall closing, there was a discussion about what the operating hours would be. And at the time, no one had a definite answer, but it was suggested that it could be as late as midnight. So midnight for receiving, it sounds like that might mean trucks come in and drop off vehicles after hours, but I wonder what that drop-off process is like. There are, I'm sure, other people here to talk about the environmental impact. I came across this certificate of the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs on the notice of the project change dated April of this year. So April, when we were all at home isolating, this document was signed and distributed. It included letters sent to the Secretary of the State of Affairs from agencies such as the Taunton River Watershed Association, Mass Audubon, Save the Bay, Free Town Historical Commission, Green Futures, a number of agencies that are very concerned and much more educated than I am about the impact of this business in our area. I think three hundred and eighty-six acres was mentioned tonight, but the document said the total riverfront boardwalk area was four hundred and six. That two hundred and six of it was supposed to be dedicated to conservation land. So I don't know where the three hundred and eighty-six acres is coming from, if two hundred and eighty-six, two hundred and six of it is supposed to be reserved. It's really scary, reading the laissez-faire attitude about the environment. This is my first, I'm, I'm attending for the first time, so I apologize if this discussion has happened a few times. It's concerning. It's alarming. There was a question about whether or not the cars would be required to be drained before going on-site. And Attorney Kelloran said on December third that he would check to see if that was indeed a condition. I'm wondering if that has been confirmed or not. It is a concern of mine, simply being downwind of a facility that, that does handle cars that come and go. They might be crushed or squished or whatever, but I can smell them. I can hear them, and I am concerned about the ramifications of up to twenty-two thousand cars coming in. Or at least on this plan that I read, there was room for up to twenty-two thousand. Let's call it twenty thousand. If twenty thousand cars are coming in, twenty thousand cars are going out somehow, some way. If they're not processing the car on-site, somebody else is processing it somewhere, is processing it somewhere, so it needs to be delivered to the buyer. And I have to say, I had other things to say, but I, I think what scares me and what I feel like I just need to bring up because it just doesn't feel right. It was mentioned that this, this process was started about a decade ago. It was five years ago that the plan for the Riverside waterfront area was proposed, that site, just this past April. It was amended to include Copart. Yet, it was about five years ago that I got a message from a neighbor very concerned about Excel. At the time, I heard the noise. I could smell it. It was just starting to get going. I did not know what it was. And a neighbor let me know that a group of neighbors were getting together, sort of being corralled to represent our area residents immediately affected by Excel. And they were being represented by a law firm in the area. And the suit was funded by an anonymous party. I wasn't really sure what was going on. I wanted to hear it for myself, so I called to find out what this was all about. And it sounds like they had a pretty good understanding of the fact that my kids had a lot of respiratory issues when they were younger. And I felt like that would be exploited in this case. They were looking for exactly ten residents. They managed to find ten residents. I was not one of them. I did not feel comfortable not knowing who was paying for that lawsuit. Made me incredibly uncomfortable. And in the end, those ten residents that signed up for this lawsuit, now their hands are tied. They're not allowed to speak about many things regarding Excel, and I know that's a different story. But seeing Attorney Kelloran here, after hearing his voice on the phone that day, just makes me so nervous. And I don't know what the connection is, but I can't help but bring it up and just point out to someone, wow, what's going on? So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. You'll be able to respond. You might have to hold it. Next. Anybody else? Come on up. Just state your name and your, what side of town you're on.
I'm a Director Butler. My name is William James, and I live at 258 Baby Wad, directly across the river.
Okay.
So I'm direct in line with it.
From Somerset? Somerset? Berkeley? Okay, thank you.
And I have several concerns.
If you're close to the mic, the microphone.
You're closer? Okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
I have several concerns. And I'm, and I'm not anti-development by any means, because I am a developer. I have concerns. My, my concern is, my main concern is that the Taunton River is the, is the water supply for the city of Taunton, for Dayton, and for the city of Brockton, for their new plant that they have. So I'm concerned with this type of a construction being built or this type of use directly on the waterfront. I don't understand how anybody could think this is a good area or a good use for this, so close to the water. I understand they take all kinds of measures to prevent things. But this particular project has the river in front of it. It has a sonnet bay around the corner. It has a river coming up the, the right side of it, and there's a big pond behind it. So three sides of the project are surrounded by water. I've been listening to my equipment running all this time. It's, it's, it's sound like it's in my yard. I know that'll stop once they have the project done, and I know that'll go away. But I went through the package and I read it. I was never notified. And I don't know, there's a, a question on whether I am a Director Butler or not. I am directly across from the river, so I would, I think if I, if I pressed it with a judge, I think they would find, they would give me, they would listen to me. The other concerns I have, and I read the whole package, and the Natural Heritage identified the area as an endangered species for Diamondback Turtle, a nesting area. I remember a few years back, they had helicopters going up and down the river, and they were looking for areas that were trying to preserve for that reason. In their letter from the England Heritage, they said more information needs to be gathered. And it should be looked at and investigated, and they, and they identified it as that area. So I don't know if that was ever done. That is in their letter that they have. Then there's a letter from the, from the Save the Bay that had several concerns with the whole thing, with the amount of cars. They said that the approval that they originally got from M EPA was for a different use, and then they switched the use, and they don't know if they went back. And, and there was some talk with some of the letters from the state that they had discussed it, but I'm not sure that they had to refile or change it. But the, at the end of the letter, the conclusion, they say they strongly advised that the project be reconsidered, and the applicant asked to redesign to avoid the riverfront area of the wild and scenic Taunton River. That was, you know, and then they said the flood plain and the buffer associated with the wetlands to help protect the water quality entering in the river. Addressing impacts in the river will benefit the good of the citizens of Free Town, Taunton River, Narragansett Bay Watershed, and surrounding towns. So that was their response to it. At the beginning of the letter, it said they were not aware of it till after it was approved. And, and there's another response in here that said basically the same thing. I, I read the DEP's comments on it, and the DEP basically reviewed it and didn't have a lot of recommendations. So I'm not sure if they, if they really listened to the other departments, you know, Numa Heritage, or if they even read that information. I'm not sure where the ball was left with these other places making comments that should be addressed. So I feel like they should be addressed. But my biggest concern is, I mean, being surrounded by all the water that's there, accidents happen. If those cars start leaking oil, I mean, why would we even risk in this day and age putting it in there? Just doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, thank you. We're going to address all of this. Don't worry. Next.
Hello, my name is Marcus Baptiste. I'm also from Berkeley, right across the river on Chester Avenue. A few questions. How many cars? Should I address the Board for these or?
You can just say them out loud. I, I have some of the same concerns. I'm sure the rest of the Board does, so you can just say them out loud and they'll be addressed.
How many cars are they going to be stored? I've heard fifteen thousand. I've heard twenty-two thousand.
I've heard thirty-two thousand, but that will be addressed.
Okay. And as a follow-up to that, what's the turnover rate? So how many days, how many times per day is that forklift going out back? And I'm assuming the forklift has a backup alarm? Because I know we listen to Stop and Shop. Because I know we listen to stop and shop backup alarms. All the time and this would just make the situation even worse. So I agree with all the environmental things that everybody else has said. I'm not gonna repeat those same concerns, so I'm gonna limit my concerns to. How many cars? What's the turnover rate? How often is that forklift going out back? Is it all day, every day? I would imagine twenty thousand cars. That forklift must be pretty busy. Does the parking lot have lights? Are we gonna be staring at a lit parking lot all night long? Twenty-four uh, every night of the week? And. I appreciate the fact that a fence has been installed around the area. And I believe it's an eight-foot fence. But the corner that I face. And this is similar for several of my uh, neighbors. The low corner of the parking lot is about elevation twenty-seven. So an eight-foot fence would be elevation thirty-five. The parking lot at its peak in the area that we can see is forty-two. And the car, let's say, is five feet tall, so that's forty-seven. So. We're gonna look right over the fence. I mean, it's it's. Almost doesn't, shouldn't even be there. It's not gonna hide anything at all.
Okay, thank you. Do you have one more thing?
I would like to request a burn and the fence be put on a burn. This would serve two purposes. It would visually help block it. Uh, not only for the residents, but everybody that uses that very active river every day, every weekend. And it would also help with the noise. You know, if there could be a ten-foot burn and then the fence on top of it. That would shield most of the view and really help with the sound.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've already, I'm gonna take somebody new first and then if there's time, I'll have to come right back. Yes, you may.
And my name is Nancy Thomas. I'm from Brayton Point, Somerset, Massachusetts. And I'm here in support of some of my friends in Freetown who are fighting the scrap metal industry. As someone who lives in Brayton Point on the waterfront. Where there is end-of-life storage vehicle, um, scrap metal industry, I clean that beach every single day. I can one hundred percent assure all of you that those car metal parts end up in the water. Oil ends up in the water. I have video after video after picture after picture of dusting the property. Metal trucks traveling through our residential neighborhoods. Megatrucks uncovered scrap metal driving through neighborhoods with little children waiting for buses. I mean, uh, it's non-stop. We have about fifty to sixty trucks a day traveling through our neighborhood. They're proposing three hundred because like this company, they want to expand auto storage, other businesses. That are directly impacted Taunton River and the Mount Hope Bay. And we want you to know that we're here to support you and we urge you to oppose any kind of auto storage. Scrap metal businesses in this area before we become the next Adams Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna take a break from um, the public right now. It seems that some of the concerns that we're hearing are some of um, at least my concerns. So I'm gonna stop asking some questions. I will go back to the public, but it seems like we're we're going down the same route. So. As I understand it, your operations are a large number of vehicles, wrecked vehicles um. Are stored at the facility until sold. So that's how I simplify things. But it's really not that simple. As I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, because this matters in my determination. Is my understanding that the truck trips are an average of two hundred and fifty per day?
The, I'm sorry, the vehicular traffic will be approximately three hundred to three hundred and fifty trips per day, correct Brendan? I'm sorry? Bringing car with the pre-engineering. So the the traffic generation is estimated at three hundred to three hundred and fifty trips per day. That is including. Employees, there's approximately thirty employees on site during the day. The trucks, the cars generally come in one or two at a time. They leave on larger trucks, so they come in on flatbeds or uh. Tow trucks. Some of them come in on bigger car carriers. They leave in a in a mix, so it's not three hundred trips a day of trucks. It that's including the employees, so it's probably roughly half of that. For, you know, car carriers and trucks, but we're not talking all ten car carriers. We're talking single cars coming in on a, you know, tow hitch. Flatbeds, things like that as well.
Okay, so I had two fifty truck trips, but now you're saying there's three hundred to three fifty. Vehicle trips, which includes truck trips, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, I've also heard that, or I've read somewhere through the, through your application. Or somewhere through um, your site plan review with Planning Board of Conservation Commission. That you're gonna be storing thirty-two thousand vehicles on site. Is that correct? Can you explain?
That is not correct.
Okay, go ahead.
The maximum capacity of the site, if it was fully maximized, is in the twenty thousand car range um, daily. Uh, kinda to explain Copart's use in, uh, Copart's here, they can probably speak better to me, but um. A site like this, they view as a day-to-day operation, so on a day-to-day basis, they're anticipating between eight and twelve thousand cars. The extra capacity is for what they call cat uh, catastrophe capacity. So. If there's a major storm event, they get a large influx of cars. They need these larger facilities to store these cars until they're sold and. I believe, just so everybody's clear, um, you know. One part of the uses, these cars are not disassembled in any way. They come in, they're basically stabilized. Any broken pieces, they're wrapped. Windows are broken, they're wrapped, they're inspected for leaks. They go through an inspection process. They're basically um, put into a storage state and then they leave under the same conditions. They're not driven on site. So they're not disassembled, they're not parted up, they're not scrapped, they're not shredded. That's not their operation. But the large capacity allows them, and they sit on every, fifty to eighty days maximum is.
Yeah, I'd say forty-five to sixty.
Forty-five to sixty days is.
So to that gentleman in the back, the turnover rate is forty-five to sixty?
Forty-five.
All right, thank you. Um, the vehicles or car carriers that are bringing in the vehicles, sorry, um, are those your vehicles or are those gypsies?
No, they're subcontractors that we hire.
Okay, they're subcontracted. Um, you also mentioned that some of those car carriers would be coming overnight? Or in the middle of the night?
No.
No.
So, go ahead.
Well, let me clarify that and if I misspoke, I apologize. So so that's in the event that say there was an automobile accident, there's a disabled car. There there, that car may be brought in on a tow truck and dropped off at the night drop-off, but it would not be a car carrier coming in with six, seven, eight, nine, ten cars and unloading cars. It's on the off chance that there's something that needs to be unloaded after hours.
Okay, so is there an off chance that a car carrier carrying eight to ten cars would come at night? Okay, um, do you have any place on site? Um, should that happen, that somebody, uh, one of those gypsy or con- contractors can stay on site and sleep? Or take care of themselves without going into a son of village?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that question.
Okay. If somebody had to stay overnight because they had to drop off a car in in, you know, coming from wherever, maybe Connecticut, they have an accident or. I'm not saying this is gonna happen, I'm just saying, should that happen and that car or. Carrier or contractor were on the road for a long period of time and they needed to stay somewhere like, you know, just regroup. Chill out. Is there a place on site that will take care of those um, carriers or contractors?
No, they 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 don't provide for people to stay overnight.
All right, thank you. Um, also with your truck and um. Truck traffic. Has the plan award stipulated which way you're gonna enter and exit?
Yes, Brendan, I need to speak to it.
Yes, so um. We basically have. You know, I I figured if it was a formal condition, but Copart agreed to direct all traffic to uh, twenty-four, so to the south. To the Innovation Way exit ramp. There's a sign of being installed. The truck, the widening that Attorney Kolorin mentioned directs trucks towards that and away from a son of a village. Yeah, it is actually a condition. Copart must require its employees and any truck traffic.
So it's 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 condition twelve of the site plan review that Copart must require. Not only its employees that may be bringing in trucks, but the subcontractors as well. The truck traffic's gotta be directed to the south to use, I believe it's exit eight, eight B.
Okay, thank you. Um, in reading over your business plan and expansion strategy, one of your goals was to enhance your ability to enter into local, regional and national agreements. Have you entered? Will you enter? Thoughts of entering into an agreement with Excel Recycling?
No.
Okay, how about Brayton Point in Somerset?
No.
Okay, thank you. Have there been any emails to or from meetings or discussions involving the same that I just mentioned?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Not that I've been a part of.
Copart?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you have any maybe ideas or partnerships, agreements or potential plans to enter an agreement with Excel or any other scrap metal facility or recycling to hold vehicles? On your site for their facilities?
No.
So you're never going to hold vehicles for Excel or any other scrap metal facility?
We, Copart sells vehicles to whoever bids on them and then they give the vehicle to whomever that is. Most of the vehicles go to an end user where the vehicles are reused or sometimes the. I'm going to assume, and Lisa, you can correct me, they may end up someplace where they're utilized for parts depending upon the condition.
Okay, so I'm just gonna ask one more time. You have no relationship with Excel at Brayton Point at this time and don't plan to?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple more questions. In reading some of your reports and in your applications, I used, but there's about two hundred and fifty locations in the U S and abroad, correct?
Right.
Okay, how many of those um, are near bodies of water and impact water and natural resources? Of those two hundred and fifty locations in the U S and abroad?
I I I I don't think anybody here can give you that number.
Okay.
I know that when we were going through some of the environmental issues that were raised at the planning board. Um, we hit, Copart had their involvement, I'll call their environmental expert, Joe Leary, um, fly in from, I believe, Atlanta. Um, and he spoke in depth in terms of the process regarding, you know. Making sure vehicles are properly taken care of before they get sent out to storage. And there were discussions there in terms of. Facilities, lake facilities, being located in environmentally sensitive areas. I believe that he mentioned an air, a couple of facilities in California. Uh, which I think if you know anything about California, they have very strict environmental laws. Um, and 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 that they were placed in next to either whether it be bodies of water or other environmentally sensitive areas. And I'm just talking about how they've never had any issues there.
Okay, do you know how many in bodies of water are you gonna impact with this facility?
Can you say that again?
Do you know how many bodies of water or inlets that you're going to impact with this facility?
Brendan can probably speak better to this, but I think based on the design, there's not gonna be any impact to bodies of water or any inlets.
Okay, so those eight inlets and eight bodies of water that are on the plans, you're not gonna impact them at all, correct? So I'm just wondering if there were any special safeguards you've put in place to ensure that these natural resources are protected from contaminants?
Yeah, so um, as Attorney Kolorin discussed, we've gone through rigorous review of the state. We meet all state regulations, all local regulations, all. Uh, EPA national regulations with regards to stormwater treatment. The site is uh, deemed a land use of higher potential gluten loading, so basically. Under the Massachusetts Stormwater regs, certain uses are seen as an elevated. You know, site when it comes to stormwater. They have heightened standards. We meet all those standards. We've. Um, met all Department of Environmental Protection standards, Freetown standards. We've agreed to above and beyond treatment, uh, monitoring uh, wells installed in the basins that will be tested twice a year or once. Annually um, for contaminants. We actually con- uh, basically approached the town very early in the design to start working with their peer who consulted. From basically day one, um, to make sure that they were in the loop on the way the designers had in every piece of the design. They had their input from. You know, the ten percent design plan, the 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 planning of the site, stormwater treatment, um, we did during the deeper process of thorough. Riverfront area analysis is a two-hundred-foot river um, front area associated with the time and a certain rivers. They have thresholds on, you know, how much of that you can disturb, what you can do in that uh, that riverfront area. We're below half of what's allowed for work within that riverfront area on our site. So, you know, we've met every, we've answered every question you've been asked by. All the, you know, state agencies, NEPA, D E P, the town of Freetown Conservation Commission, the planning, they are consultants, um, and we believe, you know, we've designed a.
That's okay, and I appreciate that, but you, I'm hoping that we're gonna continue and you can answer my questions as well.
What, did you repeat your question?
No, you just said that you answered all the questions, but we have questions. Okay, thank you. So there were twelve stormwater basins. Do these basins fully contain uh, contain the toxic chemicals that come from the cars? And trucks and motor vehicles?
So Copart has a very thorough spill and containment system. They have inspection. Um, they control any leaks. They have special procedures if they if they see a leak. Uh, this this basically the stormwater design system in in the spill prevention system is to. Basically prevent any contaminants from reaching those basins. But yes, the. The basins and the sand filters and the the swales and every B M T that was chosen for the site is directly geared towards treating the potential contaminants that a site like this would generate.
Can I just add uh, onto that? Again, the way this site was designed, no contaminants, if a contaminant was released from a vehicle. Is intended to ever reach the detention basins and swales. But one of the conditions of the planning board is they wanna ensure that that's the case. One of the conditions they put in there that we have to do annual testing. And submit our findings to the town. Uh, I can tell you that Copart, I don't know if they, I'm not gonna say they don't do that at any two hundred and fifty sites, but that is something that is not typically required. Freetown was insisted on it. Copart said that they would not fight back against that. They don't have anything to hide, they just don't think that it was necessary. But they willingly agreed to do it. It's part of the condition of the site plan review, of site plan approval, excuse me.
All right, thank you. Um. So you would agree though that the safeguards put in are, would reduce the risk, but doesn't really guarantee that these natural resources are protected, correct?
Yeah. I mean Brendan's Brendan's the engineer, I'll let him speak to that, but I I I don't think I would agree with that. If perchance something did get into those drainage swales, detention basins, the way that they are designed, the materials that are used. They wouldn't move contaminants before it would ever hit one of the natural resources, but Brendan's.
No, that that's correct. They're designed to. You know, the sand filters, infiltration areas are designed to treat oils, greases, um. Any potential, you know, fluid that would leak from these vehicles, which isn't anticipated to happen in Copart, hasn't had um. Any incidents of, correct, any EPA violations, any type of incident on any of their sites.
Thank you. I'm glad you can guarantee that for the town of Freetown. Um, what materials are using, are you using for the parking areas? Cracked gravel, grinding, stone or asphalt?
It's a, it's a tremendous asphalt project, uh, product, so that was um. It's called chip seal or um, something similar to that. It's basically a gravel that's sprayed with a asphalt.
And what measures have you enlisted for full dust con- dust control?
Um, on site during construction or post-construction? During construction, there's a soil erosion control plan that's implemented on the site. Um, there's daily inspections of the site, there's weekly inspections as required by the state of. All the um, erosion control, there's water trucks present on the site as they work. You know, they follow standard practices that they. Kinda center their activities in one certain area of the site so not to disturb the entire site. Uh, post-construction, similar to that, that um, material. One of the reasons a a pervy, uh, impervious material was chosen was for dust control, so. Um, it's like a typical asphalt doesn't, uh, it's not a gravel field or a dirt field that would generate dust.
Thank you. Um, what type type of fire suppression? Is there, is there a, I know there is fire suppression in the area, but were there any additional ones? I I was gonna ask the chief that and I don't see him here, so.
Um, so we've met several times with the fire department. There's hydrants being installed on site. That were approved by the the fire chief. There's a pretty robust security system that includes thermal imaging that can detect fires, um, you know, immediately if there was a fire.
And is that directed, is that um. Going right to the fire station or?
It goes to Copart's facility, but um, the police and fire have the ability to monitor it as well.
Okay, has Copart any, had any fires in any of their facilities at all?
Once in a while we do that one.
Once in a while, okay. So um, during fire, when putting a fire out, um, was there consideration put to? Putting the fire out and the runoff from the uh, you know, from using. Um, and the runoff from the, uh, you know, from using?
Yeah, um, that's a typical, I mean, that's something that's dealt with every use, it's no different than a, a parking lot, a car, you know, probably more likely to happen, leaks in, um, in fires are probably more likely to happen in a, you know, a Walmart parking lot, because these cars are actually being driven around and that, in a, a facility like this, cars aren't being started, no fuel is being burned, um, to generate potential for a fire, so I would say there's the risk might be lower. But yet, all stormwater facilities are basically handled to control runoff from if there was a potential of fire. Does that potential exist on basically any use?
Okay, thanks. So it looks as though, um, Co-Part is doing really well, stock prices are up, business locations increasing, and we, all of us here hope that businesses always thrive, but sometimes they don't. Can you tell me what the remediation plan is for once you, you may leave the town of Free Town? And has one been developed?
Uh, remediation plan for?
Cleaning up the area once you're gone, if you're gone?
I mean, the cars, I'm not a Co-Part employee, so, um, but, um, the, the cars would be removed, I assume?
And it would be removed, but I can honestly tell you, I've been working for Co-Part for twenty-nine years and we've never left them, ever.
So there's really not a remediation plan that you've ever seen or developed?
I have never seen that.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's no doubt that you find yourselves a beautiful piece of property, and at one time we were looking at an office building built to enhance the serene environment, um, where employees could enjoy themselves where the town of Free Town could go and enjoy themselves as well. A business that would fit the small-town charm of Free Town. I'm sure you wanna be a good partner and work with the town. Can you tell me about the host agreement that you have with Fall River?
The proposed host agreement?
Yes.
Uh, I didn't represent Co-Part, uh, as part of that Fall River transaction, uh, I know that there was a host agreement, I don't know, uh, all the terms of that.
Okay, thank you, can you tell me why at any time throughout this process that, that you have never initiated any such thing with the town of Free Town, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, or the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, I, I'm not a Co-Part employee, um, I, I, I think typically if the conversations were initiated by a community, Co-Part would engage in them, uh, but I don't think that that's something that they would just automatically offer. Uh, I, I think that they look at themselves as a good corporate neighbor, uh, to all the communities that they're in. Uh, they, I know that people may not necessarily like the use that's gonna go on at, at this property, the proposed use of this property, uh, but it's one that's allowed as a matter of right. Uh, Co-Part operates two hundred and fifty facilities worldwide, and I think that they do so in a first-class nature. Uh, they're gonna be paying a lot of real estate taxes to this community, uh, they're gonna generate a number of jobs. Uh, and so Co-Part does think that, you know, it does its fair share in terms of contributing back to the town. If, if that was something that Co-Part was approached about, I don't think that they would shun, shun the, uh, suggestion or the request or, or the communications they would have them. But it's not something that they, uh, they offer to communities that they're going into.
Thank you, I just have to disagree with you a little bit, um, see, Co-Part is gonna be using contractors, so their vehicles will not be part of the town. Um, also, they're using impervious material, which I don't think we're gonna get, uh, the bank fraud lot throughout that three hundred and forty acres. So really, we're paying for the buildings and whatever the small buildings you have on site, that's what our tax would be on, so. Thank you for your time, um, I will turn it over to either one of the other two selectmen at this time.
Is it really covered a lot there?
Yeah.
Um, the only question I know that, um, you know, from Berkeley asked, whether the, uh, would it be lit twenty-four seven?
No, there's, the, the only lighting, um, that's proposed on the site is on the entrance road to the building and directly around the door. So the, the car storage areas are not that.
And now, and would, would it be considered to create, you know, some type of berm or go higher with the fence or something? I myself like to enjoy the, the water over there.
Um, I can tell you, and I've driven up the Somerset side, so I've seen the views, you know, since the site's been cleared. Um, there's two areas on the site that are visible and to shut the berm to block that view would be, um, tens of feet high, uh, I think that would be more of a, I mean, an equivalent, if you want to have the, the, I'm not saying equivalent, but it would be, uh, it wouldn't be something that would be natural, to say that way.
That's all I got, pardon?
All right, I'll go back to the public, anybody have anything else? Do you even come up?
Good evening, my name's Benjamin Chester, I live in the Sonnet Bay Shores. Uh, my concerns are, they pretty much echo what other people have. My, uh, I have friends and family, namely my children, that live in Berkeley on the Sonnet River. Uh, they rely on residential well water, there's no public water over there. And we, um, we have the water tested over there biannually, there's always high sodium, which leads me to believe there's some saltwater intrusion into those wells. So any potential runoff or contamination of the river is gonna go right into the drinking water for people over there. Um, other than that, living in the Sonnet, I think we're overrun with truck traffic. Someone mentioned that the signage would divert the trucks to exit B. I believe Stop and Shop has similar signage, but most of the trucks still use exit nine. Um, in Bay Shores, we get the eighteen-wheelers all the time that are lost trying to get to Stop and Shop. And I can't imagine this has been approved in that situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Breitman, eight one eighty-one South Main Street. If I heard you right, you said there's gonna be three hundred and fifty trucks a day?
No, not trucks, may I answer?
Yes, you can.
Not, not trucks per day, vehicle trucks.
Vehicle trucks, but there's still gonna be three hundred and fifty vehicles?
Three hundred and fifty vehicle trucks.
Okay. You got three hundred and fifty to four hundred of Stop and Shops. You got three hundred of Stop and Shops, you got probably a hundred and fifty of Gypsies, okay? You know what it's like getting out of my yard right now? Now you're gonna put in another three hundred and fifty vehicles? I think, and most likely they're gonna have just a stop sign like Stop and Shop Scott, which they don't stop. So you're gonna have all these people coming in and out, I think you're gonna need a set of traffic lights down there, myself. That place is unbelievable, you ought to come down to our mill and spend a night there. I, I don't know how, I don't know how that road's gonna handle another three hundred and fifty vehicles.
I'm not, you're absolutely right, it is a concern.
Yeah, there's only two lanes there.
That's why I made a point of asking.
Yeah, and they say they're gonna go, you know, all twenty-four, just like all the Gypsies doing everything. Madonna Juniors or Irvin's Gas, Tommy's Backyard, Free Zendi's Field across the street. They're all over the place, I think they should have a parking place, and they are, if the trucks wanna stay there.
I think you heard me ask that question.
Stop and Shop should have had that too, but they didn't, so...
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Edward Jamison, I live in, uh, Chester, Alabama, Berkeley, Mass, and I have some of the same concerns that my neighbors have. I live across the river from this project, and I can see right down into the project, uh, where they clear the trees. I'm very concerned about that, I feel like it's brought the value of my property down. I think that there needs to be a berm there, I'm also very concerned about, um, about if they're gonna have lakes in the parking lot, as, as Marcus said. I'd also like to know how many loaders or forklifts they're gonna be running to move these three hundred-plus cars a day. You know, anytime you have loaders and forklifts moving cars, there's always operator error, there's potential to punch holes in gas tanks. You got oil pans, you got radiators, um, you know, in last meeting that I attended, I think it was back in maybe April, or maybe a little before that, at the town hall, they said that their state-of-the-art recovery program was that they were gonna have drip pans underneath all these cars that were coming in if they were leaking or if they were, because a lot of these cars that come in, they're damaged from insurance companies, so they could potentially have leaking radiators, leaking oil pans, and leaking gas tanks already. So, like I said, the sophisticated system was at that meeting that they were gonna put drip pans under all these cars. So you're talking each car has a rear end, it's got a gas tank, it's got an oil pan, it's got a radiator, so that's three potential places, never mind brake lines and everything else. You know, I don't know if they're gonna have three, four, five drip pans under each car, but if you're talking twenty thousand cars, that's, you know, sixty to eighty thousand drip pans, I don't know how many employees they're gonna have there to monitor all these drip pans, but it, but it is a big problem, um. One of the other concerns that I have is, uh, I, I, I was concerned about why they got, I think that they were trying to push this through down the Fall River, and I think you might have brought that up. But I believe that they were denied down Fall River on the waterfront, and I'm just really confused why they got denied down there, but they're getting approved up here, which is a big problem to me. You know, that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, I just wanna, for a point of clarification for everybody, we're the licensing authority of a class-two license. So we are not giving them anything but a class-two license, so I, I think that everybody needs to just really understand that. Um, they have the permission from the planning board and from the Conservation Commission, so a lot of those concerns should have been addressed there. Um, but it doesn't mean that they cannot be addressed here, and I think that Co-Part, I'm sure you're listening.
Co-Part's is not a recycler, and I'm well aware of that, they're exactly what they say, they're, they're basically selling cars for parts. And they're basically selling them to recyclers, and they're gonna go, they're gonna strip them down, they're gonna sell the parts, and then the cars are gonna get crushed, and then they're gonna end up back at a recycle like XL or down Brayton Point, and that's, that's end of life, and that's, you know, it's, it's, it's the whole process, um, and, look, it's an industry that's out there that's needed. Um, I think it could be suited somewhere better than on the waterfront, and that's my opinion, but...
Thank you, um, excuse me, can, uh, no, this is blind or? Co-Part, can you, um, just address, because I've heard it a couple of times now, the lighting and also the forklifts? Can you address that, please?
Sure, the, the lighting, I, I think Brendan Card, I touched on that a little bit ago, but, um, the internal drive aisle into the property is going to be lit. One of the things that, one of the long discussions that we had when we were going before the planning board was whether we were gonna be lighting the whole parking area, and we're not going to be doing that. And we didn't wanna do that for a number of reasons, one, we don't think it's necessary, uh, from a security standpoint, it's a sophisticated security system there, and we don't think that we need all those lights. Two, we're sensitive to the neighbors, to the surrounding environment, we don't think that it would be beneficial to have that place lit up like Fenway Park. So no, the, the parking area is not going to be lit up.
And can you touch upon, um, draining great fluid, gas, any of those other things?
Yes, and, and Lisa jump in if I, if I don't explain this, uh, exactly throughout. So typically, if you have a car that is disabled due to an accident, that car does not come directly from the accident scene to Co-Part. Typically, what happens is that car will go to usually an auto repair shop. Most fluids, as a result of an accident, they're gonna drain out at the scene, but if they don't drain out there, they're likely gonna be drained out, um, at the, uh, auto repair shop. Before the car comes to Co-Part, it's usually there for a few days, because the insurance company comes, and then they do their appraisal, whether it's total, not total, or whatever it is. Then at that time, okay, if it's going to end up being a Co-Part vehicle, it's then transported to Co-Part. So usually, it is a number of days from the accident before the vehicle typically is brought, before the vehicle ends up at the Co-Part property. So when they come, if there were fluids that were leaking, they're usually all leaked out by now. But when a vehicle, any vehicle comes onto the site, there's a thorough inspection system that's done. Yes, if they notice a leak as part of their thorough inspection, they do use a drip pan to catch, capture the leak. Also, if there are any leaks, they have a, a special treatment solution that they utilize, and they utilize it all two hundred and fifty facilities worldwide to treat, uh, the, whatever the substance is that's leaking out, and this has been successful and tested all across this country and internationally. But the fact of the matter is, leaks are very, very infrequent at their property. Because again, the vehicle doesn't come from the accident scene directly to Co-Part's site. There's usually at least a few days, if not longer, before it actually ends up there.
All right, I'm just confused, because before you said, or somebody, I don't know who, I don't wanna put words in anybody's mouth, that if there is, the only reason a vehicle would come in late at night is if because it was an accident, so now I'm confused.
And I, and you, and you're right, and I did say that earlier, and I, I did state that that was a rare occasion. And, and maybe Lisa, you can explain why on occasion you'd get a late-night vehicle.
Oh, we would only get a late-night vehicle if one of our subcontractors maybe got stuck.
Can you just go to the mic, because I think everybody needs to hear this?
If, um, maybe if one of our subcontractors got stuck in traffic or something on their way into us, or whatever, something like that, it's extremely infrequent.
So subcontract, okay, so I guess this goes back, because now you got me all over the place. No, uh, so this goes back to my original question.
Yeah.
Um, that subcontractor?
Yeah.
Would be bringing in just one car or eight to ten cars?
No, no, our subcontractors are not eight-to-ten-car haulers, those are the people that come to pick up the vehicles after they purchase from us. Our contractors usually have two-car or four-car carriers.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you're saying now that it's infrequent that anybody would?
Late night, yeah.
Late night?
Yeah, very infrequent, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Go on. Anybody else?
I'm sorry for my misstatement and the confusion.
No, it, help me clear things up.
Hi, um, my name is Leah Adie, I live in the Sonnet. I guess, I, I think it's worth noting right off the bat that, um, there's opposition here from not just the Sonnet, but from Berkeley and Somerset, and I think that's just worth taking a note of. Um, you know, this waterfront area affects everybody, the river affects everybody. Um, and I'm, I'm curious as, I guess, why this property was so attractive to you, and what brought you to the Sonnet? I don't know who to ask, but, did it?
Do you want to answer?
Yeah.
It's, they were, they were looking, well, one, it's, it's, it's the size, and it's the location predominantly. They, they wanted a, a, a facility in the southeastern area of Massachusetts, or in this, you know, general vicinity, just general area, uh, because there's a demand for it.
So what, um, so I'm curious, and like, what then is the, um, the process? Of all the cars that are there, how many go to an end-of-life facility such as Excel or eventually Brayton, you know? What percentage of the cars are gonna be just scrapped?
Can't really answer that, because it just depends on the mix of cars and the, the accidents that happen to occur.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we don't sell directly to people such as Excel. We sell to, um, people that repair them and sell them as used vehicles, or that buy them and sell the parts from them. So like your local parts, you're...
So if part of the appeal of this location, the fact that there is recyclers around?
We, uh, we, no, we don't, we don't study that at all, it's more where our customers have a demand for, they're insured, they're insured. So your insurance company, I don't know who your insurance company is, um, maybe Progressive or whatever, that's one of our customers. They have a lot of concentration of volume in this type of area, so we would wanna be where they are. It, it's, it's logistically easier for us to pick up their vehicles.
Do you know, do you know Jonathan Costa? Marty Costa?
Marty Costa, sounds familiar.
He's the owner of Excel?
No, I don't, sorry.
Okay, um, that's it, all right, thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead.
I understand that there's been a lot of discussion about Excel tonight, I, I anticipated that that would be the case. I, I'll say it now, I think I said it previously, and I'll, I'll say it again, there's no connection contractual or any kind of the kind of relationship between Co-Part and the business that's going on at Brayton Point and Somerset or Excel. They didn't come here because of either one of those businesses. I, that's, that's just the reality of it, I, you know, it would be nice if XL wasn't here, so it would eliminate a lot of these questions, I understand that they are, but there's no connection between these two businesses.
Thank you.
Mary Brown, twenty-three South Main Street. With any new business coming to town, we have concerns. We have concerns because we have promises that have not been kept. And it's really on the board of selectmen to be very careful in considering this and to make sure we have conditions in place that protect all the residents. That said, we have some businesses that have been wonderful, and we hope that this is the case. That said, we have some businesses that have been wonderful, and we hope that this is the case. However, if your business comes to town, what will we gain? And how old is spent for that town? And maybe you can answer.
Again, I'm a civil engineer, I'm not a required employee.
So, your question goes that way.
I think it's gonna be the same answer that I gave before, that, that you didn't necessarily agree with, uh, Selectment Pacheco, but they're gonna bring jobs to this town. Um, they are gonna be paying real estate taxes at this town. I understand that there were other proposed uses at this property, and I understand that there may be people in town that prefer those other uses, but the reality is, is those were never developed. This is a use that's allowed as a matter of right. They do their best to be a good corporate neighbor. Um, I know they're working in concert, I think, already with fire department to allow training to go on. They allow fire, police training to, to occur at the property. They do what they can to be a good corporate neighbor, they'll bring jobs to the town, they will pay real estate taxes. I understand it may have been a prior potential use, they would have paid more on real estate taxes than Copart, but, a- again, this is a use that's allowed as a matter of right under the zoning by law.
Thank you.
I understand that there were other offers made in other communities, um, as far as monetary offers, and, uh, I haven't heard about anything else besides real estate taxes, which we're getting right now. There won't be many buildings, so what will we be getting, uh, fees for when the, all these cars are coming into, uh, uh, town? Will there be any fees?
I can just, I, you did a, uh, impact analysis as part of our, our initial, I believe the current tax payment for the site is, Jesus, twenty-eight thousand, nearly? Um, and the, the hundred, the prop, uh, annual property taxes, uh, based on the assessed value is a hundred and twenty-two thousand currently, and, um, when the improvements are done, they're anticipated to be between five hundred and seven hundred thousand. So, that's just, that was in one of the reports that we worked with Copart on, um, just for the tax implications. And just from my experience, I've worked for the previous owner of the site for, uh, twelve years on, on the site, I, you know, we ran after Meditech a lot. Um, we've done all the Mep, the NEPA planning, we went through NEPA, that process was three to four years long. We did a twenty, um, you know, master plan for twenty-eight building in Business Park. We looked at, I will say dozens and dozens of potential users, no one signed on, no one really made the leap to, um, to look at the site. One of the, the reasons, uh, it might not be why Copart here, but one of the reasons why this site was identified is because of the size, because of the industrial and business zone, because of the proximity to the highway. I think it was identified as one of ten to twelve sites in the state of Massachusetts for, you know, a, a dense economical, either industrial warehouse type use. Um, I know when Amazon was looking, they looked at the site, other users similar to Amazon have looked at the site, it was one of the only sites in, um, you know, Massachusetts left that could accommodate a building the size of, you know, the one million square foot building. Uh, the name was on a top brass stop and shop to the other half of the site, so, um, I'm just saying this to say that I'd worked on the site for ten years, and Copart was the first real tenant that, that wanted to go here. So, you know, they exhausted tons of, uh, other options, and different companies have looked at the site, and Copart was the first one to kind of really sign on, so. I know, like Mr. Quon said, there's probably other users that people would like to see on the site, other than uses for the site, but it is, um, you know, identified for this, this type of use and allowed for this type of use by the owner.
I'm just gonna have you, um, do me a favor, like, can you email me where you get five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue for the town of Free Town, please? Can you just email that to me, please?
Yeah, it's an art impact report, and that's based on the projected, uh, property value, based on Copart's experiences with other sites of similar size.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think, um, to Copart, I think that, um, Mary Brown was alluding to the same question that I asked you about, um, a whole community like that you had offered to Fall River, and why you had not offered that to the town of Free Town, I think that's what she was talking about. Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead.
My name is, um, Pamela, and I live at Seven.
I have, sorry, thank you.
My name is Pamela, I live at Southern Chester Ave. in Berkeley, Mass. And I just wanna, you know, I mean, I think a picture is worth a thousand words. Thank you for holding this hearing, I appreciate it. People really would have appreciated a little bit different kinds of notice earlier in the process. I do have a picture, a little more an after view of our view of, this is before, you can see the pristine. And now this is after. There are no cars there yet, but there will be. And so, you can, you can look at that if you want, that's your key.
Are you adding that to the record?
I am.
All right, thank you.
I'd also like to submit some, I'm an avid birder and kayaker down in Sonnet and Taunton River. I'm very concerned about the environmental impact, and I just wanna show you some of the birds that have recently returned there. I have pictures of bald eagles, I don't know if you like bald eagles, but the, these, this pair of eagles has been nesting there for the past three years, only. One of only fifty-two pair of bald eagles in the state of Massachusetts. Over two hundred acres were destroyed practically overnight. This is their habitat. Maybe no nests were destroyed, but their habitat has already been destroyed. It's also going to be paved over. There are ospreys that fish, there are wild ducks, there are herons, so I have pictures for all of you. So, even though there have been environmental impact studies, in none of those reports did it mention bald eagle habitat. I'm concerned about why that was, and why you weren't aware of that. I'm also concerned about, I don't know, I, Save the Day was supposed to be here, and they know more about the science, but if, if you understand a little bit about marshes, that when waters rise, marshes retreat, and they do a lot of filtering of air, there are a lot of habitat that live in marshes, and when you squeeze them in between, um, a body of saltwater or brackish and concrete, they die. Because they have nowhere to recede to. So, you are, you, if you approve this, you will be contributing to global warming and to depth of part of that environment. Not to mention all the other stuff, and we're concerned because we're gonna hear noise, our view, our property value, all that matters too, and it matters to a lot of people here. And I sort of feel like it's a done deal, it's kind of rushed through, that's what it feels like to us. So, there's some concerns there about why that was. So, I did have a question, I didn't hear from the back whether there was going to be a burn or no burn, so that's one question. Second question I have is, we can see, when we kayak in Barnaby Cove, which I don't know if you've been there, but we see ospreys coming down into the cove and catching fish. We can see where the land was cleared. Two hundred feet is nothing in this ecosystem, it's really not a whole lot, if you think about it, it's probably from there to the fence. That's where the concrete's going to end. That's a scary, sad thing. I don't think it's, it's really respectful of the environment, or all the people that use that waterway, including birds, animals, and people that kayak and go on the river, so thank you, I do appreciate the time, thank you.
Thank you. Can you address the burn, please?
There's, there's no burn at all, there's an eight-foot, uh, security fence surrounding the entire facility.
Do you want us to address, I know it's come up from a, a few people, comments, uh, or questions about wildlife?
You can do that right now.
We can discuss that, right?
As we've discussed, um, so, like I said, we've been working with NEPA for this project since, I believe, two thousand fifteen. So, um, you know, the discussion that it's been rushed recently. Um, yes, it was a, it was a different product, it was a business park, but to point out that business park, the limited work was larger. It was closer to the river, it was more impervious, there was more traffic, um, there was a comment on traffic. Going, you know, modeling the site with DOT and with NEPA, um, and with the improvements that have gone in for the ramp and the, the improvements to South Main Street recently. Um, the previous project was allowed to, basically, they, DOT studied it and said that up to nine thousand trips a day would be, um, that really would accommodate before any off-site mitigation would have to be included. Um, we're at three hundred and fifty trips a day, um, so we're talking three percent of the volume that would, you know, kick into, and the previous developer had a tiered system of off-site improvements. But more back to the wildlife, um, we did work with NEPA, we did work with Natural Heritage for five years for a larger project. We did file a notice project change for this project, so they've seen all this project. There was a comment about the, um, northern diamondback, uh, terrapin, which there are no, um, endangered or threatened species mapped onsite or adjacent to the site in the Taunton River, um, further up and further down. Recently, I, and I'm not the, um, wildlife engineer on this site, but I've worked with them for years, um. The terrapin was identified in the area, I think it was found in a sonnet bay, it was found in Roddick Cove in Somerset, and then I believe, um, sometime in two thousand nine-one was found off, uh, in the river. Um, so, basically, that flagged that, that species is in the Taunton River. So, our site was identified as during that, um, during that study, which I think was released in December of two thousand nineteen, um, our site was flagged as a potential habitat for that turtle. Now, that was, I, I don't know the exact entity that was done, it wasn't done by the state of Massachusetts, it was done by a wildlife group, um. The owner of the site wasn't notified that they're, they're, as required, I think they were supposed to be notified within thirty days that their site was identified as a habitat. We found out when we went to NEPA, uh, earlier this spring, uh, February, I think February to March. Uh, and we immediately met with Natural Heritage on site, our biologist, uh, biologist. They've implemented a turtle protection plan during construction, so in the areas, I think it's about four thousand to eight, uh, five thousand feet of, it's a, it's a more, uh, sturdier silt fence, it's, it's like turtle fence is what, that's been installed on site, there's turtle sweeps, um, that have performed on site to make sure. Basically, the terrapin, um, lives in the marshes, it comes again into sandy area within two to three hundred feet of the shoreline to, um, to nest. So, the intent was before construction activity was started this spring, before the nesting period of the terrapin, that you put up that turtle barrier to keep them out of the construction site. Um, and then once that barrier is up, you do your turtle sweeps, there's, uh, education courses that any contractor on site has to take, that if they see a turtle, what they're supposed to do. Since construction started, no terrapins have been found within, um, the project, none were found when, uh, Natural Heritage and our biologists walked the site, um, either February or March, no evidence of nests or anything like that, um. Natural Heritage has the ability to access the site at any time, to perform inspections, um, as does the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, what's built. Um, so, there was mention of the terrapin, I just wanted to say that in that letter, it was identified, uh, Copart and their experts immediately worked with Natural Heritage to address that issue. All of the other wildlife impacts, like I said, there's no threatened or endangered species mapped on site, but that was all reviewed as part of the NEPA process, as part of the amended NEPA process, as part of the Conservation Commission, um, reviewed by their engineer. They had no, um, further studies, no, there was nothing that Copart didn't agree to do.
Except for the burn?
The burn was first mentioned tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'm just gonna take a couple of more questions, and then I'm gonna have a recommendation to the board. Go ahead.
Um, Maranti's High Street, um, I just wanna comment, and that's Mr. Brayton, I take that road every day, don't have any shores or CBS or the band. And you can, the car, the tractor trailer coming into this town is like unbelievable. I mean, we, we literally count them, one, two, three, in the course of a minute, and it's, we don't think, nobody thinks that that road can handle these tractor trailers between, uh, XL and all the, the, uh, trucks bringing, I mean, we watch them come in, bring the stuff to XL. And going, not to hop on XL, but somehow or another, everybody knows that somehow or another XL is gonna be going to the place where these cars are brought over to Copart, and they're gonna wind up in XL. You know, because we, we, we're front line, we see all this stuff coming in, all these spear, all these trucks coming in from different parts of the state, and even Rhode Island, we see them passing us on one ninety-five going province, the trucks are coming into XL. I mean, and right now, it's, I got pictures on my phone, Saturday morning, it was making such a racket, I, I hurried up and I got dressed and I went over there, and I took pictures of the cranes ripping at XL, moving all these mountains and mountains of stuff. Now, what, if they're starting to pick up all these twenty-two thousand cars, or five thousand, or whatever it is, it's gonna be added to XL. And they're gonna be going in for more time, more time, and we're gonna be smelling this stuff, we're gonna be listening to this from seven o'clock in the morning to five o'clock at night. I told you, why I go up that road if we did, we have to leave our house, because you cannot take the noise. The noise is absolutely unbelievable.
I know, but I just wanna remind you, you're here with Copart and their license, not for XL.
We're all in agreement on High Street and Alexandria Drive, somehow or another, these cars are gonna wind up at XL. That's all I wanted to say.
I think I was pretty pointed in my questioning, and I, I've heard, and I will reiterate again, um, that right now and in the future, there will be no friendship, no anything with XL, correct?
Correct. Good evening, my name is Cora Burst, um, I'm here on behalf of the Narragansett Indian Tribe's Historic Preservation Office. What I haven't heard is the phrase peace haven. This is a twelve thousand year old site. We've, uh, we've been here before, um, when it was Meditech, that was one of the demands that the town made, was that the conservation and historic restriction be placed. When we had the previous developer, um, Churchill, um, they were supposed to not develop peace haven. I haven't walked it in six years, I admit, so I haven't seen the damage, I have had calls from some of the people in the audience um, about the desecration of, of everything being torn down, but Free Town had already desecrated it when they allowed Algonquin gas in there many decades and decades ago. Um, so we can't blame all fingers on, on any developers. And, and as the engineer stated, this is the first developer that said, hey, I got a plan. I think a burn would be the worst thing for that property. Um, I'm sure it would protect everybody's eyesight, but I think that the most important thing is really to have a real plan with a conservation restriction. The town has been promised them a zillion times, I, I, you know, worked with Mary on a couple of different sites, and it, it doesn't go through. There's always something, there's always someone that shows up on the eleventh hour, and then we don't have, um, this preserved site. I, I know a number of people want to have water access, they wanna have public access on this. As a tribal member, I really disagree with this. This was desecrated for seventy years by archaeologists. Um, it was put into about several different museums. Um, Somerset has a fantastic collection from here, Free Town doesn't have anything. And it's just been an ongoing thorn for, you know, for the last four hundred years, you know, I, I, you know, when I look at the, the oldest deed that I found on this property today was sixteen seventy-three. And there was supposed to be one section of twenty-two acres that was for, uh, the Piantes, and, uh, it was for the banished ones, and I'm one of them. Um, I'm at the Cassette Wampanoag, um, who happens to work for the Narragansett Tribe, which now gives me this authority to, to make you remember that there's been a lot of failed experiments in four hundred years. Um, I think that I've sat on conservation, I, I, um, boards before, I understand the wetlands. There is gonna be more than a ten-year storm, there's gonna be a hurricane that's gonna come up this river. Um, there's certain areas that, I think a parking lot's really foolish, but that's not my job. You know, if you're twenty-seven feet above, above sea level, there's always gonna be concerns. But I really think that it's vitally important that, um, the conservation easement, um, or restriction is placed on this. you know, prior to your approval.
Thank you.
Can we address some of those comments?
Yes.
So again, through the NEPA process, through five years, we did a lot of historical research. We had two different historical consultants work on the project. I've read a lot of studies from the forties, from the fifties, looked at the maps from the sixteen hundreds, a history person, so that stuff has interested me. Peace Haven is not within the limit of our, it was previously proposed as part of the office park development, but it was removed several years ago. Peace Haven actually falls within the area that's under the conservation restriction. And again, the mentioning that, you know, a lot of times these conservation restrictions are just mentioned, they're not. There's no teeth established on, there's a condition in Copart's approval that they have to record that conservation restriction before an occupancy permit is granted for the building, so they basically can't open their doors until that. And like the attorney partner said, that that is in final draft, and basically it's ready for signature. We just got it back from the state two weeks ago with the final comments, which Copart agreed to make those revisions. So, and that conservation restriction is a hundred and thirty-two.
The town as well, the town has been involved through that whole process as well.
Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up to the burn, Marcus Baptiste again. The first time, the reason it was first mentioned tonight is because we were not notified at any of the other meetings. I didn't know anything about this project until the trees started getting cut. I know we're separated by a river, but other than that, we are direct abutters, we're front row, we see everything. So it really would have been nice to have been at all of the plan meetings and conservation meetings, and this issue could have been brought up at that time. I am in construction, a burn can be built. It would offer tremendous help in blocking this visually. It sounds like every other aspect of the project has been studied, from environmental to archaeological. Doesn't sound like anybody's considered the visual impact of the property, not only for the abutters, but everybody using the river. It's a very, very populated waterway, and people are gonna be looking at twenty thousand cars there. It can be shielded, it should be shielded, a burn would accomplish that. A burn with a fence on top of it would accomplish that. Thank you. And I'm more than willing to meet with the engineers or attorneys in, you know, off-site to review some options on that. Thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna take the last three people in line, because it's getting dark, I can't see. And we'll make the plan. Unless you've already spoken, if you've already spoken, I'm sorry, Erica and, sorry, anybody that has not spoken. Okay.
My name is Jeff Cardell, I'm from Somerset, and I'm here on behalf of Save Our Bay, Brayton Point. I'm not here to speak against or for Copart, I'm certainly not here to speak against my longtime acquaintance, Mr. Kalaran, who I've known for over forty years, which dates us a little bit. I'm just here, you know, companies, I've learned a lot over the last year that we've been dealing with EMR over Brayton Point and big companies like this, they're here to make money. That's why they're here, they're here to make money. The company in Brayton Point doesn't care about the residents. I will just offer this, I don't know anything about Free Town's zoning bylaws, Free Town's town bylaws, I know nothing about them. I know when Somerset granted permits to Brayton Point, they put in a laundry list of zoning conditions, okay? That we've since learned now, we put in time restrictions for truck traffic, we put in trucks must be covered, we've put in speeding limits, we've put in number of trucks that can go down the road. I don't know if you're familiar with Brayton Point, there's only one way down there and one way out, and I happen to live on that road. And I have two hundred and fifty trucks a day go by my house. And they're big, when that woman says they're big, they're big, believe me. Somerset now wants to increase that truck traffic to five hundred and fifty trucks a day. They're going before the zoning board on September first. But in regards to the conditions, if you are gonna place conditions on this business, make sure they're enforceable. Because right now, we have conditions that we're being told were written that are not enforceable. And they were put there to protect the residents, and we're being told they're not enforceable, which is a huge concern. So, you know, again, I'm not here to speak for or against Copart, I don't know anything about Copart. I can tell you, though, again, it's all about the money, right? They can tell you those cars aren't going to XL, but believe me when I tell you, it's cheaper for them to take a car a quarter of a mile down the road to XL than it is to take it to somewhere else to be shredded. Okay? And they're gonna do that because it's cheaper. And I can tell you that those XL trucks, because I see them every single day, those trucks are going to Brayton Point. All right, in Somerset, that's where they're going. And I'm not sure if anybody here is familiar with what's going on in Brayton Point, but there's a huge fight going on. And we've been at it for a year. You know, the dust, the noise, the harassment by the employees, because we complain, you know. So I would hope the town is doing a little bit more than our town officials are doing in Somerset to protect the residents. That would be my concern, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, it's been brought up a couple of times, and I just, I know about notice. The site plan review process, notices were sent out to the abutters. Part of the conservation, notice of intent process, notices were sent out to the abutters. I understand that some of the people that spoke tonight live across the river in Berkeley or live in Somerset. They obviously wouldn't get that notice because of where they live. But respectfully, we've gone through the proper permitting process in the town of Free Town. Proper notices have been sent out. Again, I don't want to get caught up on XL, that keeps getting brought up. But I think part of the problem with XL was, it never went through, or there was a dispute as to whether or not it needed to go through site plan review, or whether or not it needed a special permit, and it never went through that process. And the same thing down in Somerset, I live in Somerset, I don't live down the point, but I'm familiar with what's going on. Part of the problem is, is that the company that owns that property down there was already engaging in scrap metal business before they actually applied to the town and got permits and got approvals that they needed. I don't think Copart should be grouped in with these other businesses, that they shouldn't have to pay for the sins of these other businesses. They've gone through the proper channels. We first asked for a zoning determination, excuse me, determination letter from the building inspector. He said it's a right that's allowed as a matter of right, but we'd have to go through site plan review, which we knew. We go through that process with proper notice, we go through Conservation Commission with proper notice, and we're coming before this board, again, with proper notice to the abutters. I just don't want Copart lumped in, you know, because of some other companies may have committed sins, for those to fall onto Copart. We're an international company, and yes, Mr. Cardell's right, they are interested in making money, but that's not at the expense of the communities that they operate in.
Thank you, I think that we've heard a lot of testimony, concerns, questions. I, for one, want to take it all in. I don't know how my counterparts feel, but I would like to continue this meeting for two weeks at five o'clock. So two Wednesdays from now, five o'clock, same place. Is that okay? I mean, I think that we have more homework to do, and we may have some more questions. I just, I'm not gonna lay out exactly what would happen at that time, but I would think that I would more than likely close public comment somewhat earlier in the meeting, and then allow for deliberation between the three of us, and then make a recommendation at that time. All right, so, thank you, so I'll entertain a motion from the board to continue this meeting for two weeks, five o'clock, same place. Who have a second? All in favor? Aye. Anything else before the board's selectmen? Thank you. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn? Who have a second? All in favor? Aye.